I'd like to call the September eleventh, do I have September 11th?
Twenty fifth.
September 25th.
Twenty fifth.
Planning Board session to order. Can we have a roll call, please Gloria?
Chair Lufaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Buttou.
Present.
Board Member Blazer.
Present.
Board Member Fulham is out. We have a quorum.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Any minutes Gloria?
Yes, November 11th minutes.
November 11th, motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor. We're going to close out the...
I'm going to talk to them, I want to just talk to them about their project for a couple of minutes. Is it okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You want to stay in and do the seventy, eighty?
I'll go, yeah, is Prentice here?
Yeah, Prentice is here.
Okay, good. Seventy, eighty Scuttle Hole Road?
So, if you recall, this was on the agenda two meetings ago, on August 28th, we went through the staff report pretty thoroughly, so there were just been a couple minor changes and... so I have a revised report before you and since then Kara Back, the Director of Housing has also weighed in and gotten this, a full response and I've had subsequent conversations with Prentice though.
My recollection is that was sort of the last piece that we were still questioning exactly how it was going to be worded.
So, the discussion sort of, the application was always presented as the Hampton Yard, who's occupying the office space, uses affordable housing for their staff and that became a question if we could do that specifically or if it has to be open. The, Kara's response, her recommendation is that the board open it up to the general town workforce and not include any specific language for any specific employer, which I think is what the board would have done anyway.
That's what the law is, yes.
But they can, having said that, the owners select the tenants, not the town. The housing looks at...
Eligibility.
Income eligibility.
And the income, and they confirm the income and they do that annually.
The landlord can select the...
Yes, so even although the language, the covenants will have it open to the workforce of the town, they can select whoever they want to select, so it's their staff, it's their staff.
But does that person then have to go through the process with the town or not?
They have to be vetted, I think.
So Bram Reiner.
Yes.
He's here on behalf of the applicant.
And Martha Riker, to emulate them on behalf of the applicant.
So, we were part of the conversations with Kara Back, the town housing director, and it was confirmed that the owner in fact is going to be the one who selects the tenant, but the tenant has to qualify under the town's income eligibility vetting process. So, there's an application process, they have to submit and they have to be meeting the criteria based upon the income levels that are agreed upon. And right now, we're asking the board to recognize income eligibility to be somewhere between low and middle income and that's based upon the regional, I think it's the Long Island...
I think you're right.
Yeah, it's the National Suffolk.
The Hudson Family.
Family guidelines.
Well, this board doesn't do that, it's the Housing Board in the town.
No, well Kara deferred to the Planning Board as far as the income level, Claire and I reviewed it and it seems that flexibility is key, sort of a positive thing here and that's also coming from Kara a little bit.
No, but it shouldn't come from Kara, a little bit, she should write a memo and we can then say we agree with it.
As far as the income level, specific income level.
We're not going to be writing it.
I spoke with her today and she said that the Planning Board selects that, she's open to...
We've never done that, ever. Does anybody remember giving that for housing?
I'm sorry, what are you talking about with the specific?
The income level to, for the whoever applies to the affordable housing.
Not going through the lottery, right?
No, she said no because it's too few units.
Yeah, I think if it just, I don't think they, unless you want a specific income level, they would just be looking for anything up to the hundred and twenty percent, I think it is.
Yeah, that's what we discussed, the high says a hundred and thirty, Claire and I were looking at it, even if the board, I'll give you a copy of this because it's easier to follow.
It's not going through the lottery system and ultimately the landlord is responsible for picking the tenants and then the tenants individually have to go qualify, so unless you guys have a specific want for a specific income level, it would just be up to the hundred and thirty percent.
Right, I don't know why we would even...
No, I think it's that thing where it's up to, just like, that's how I discussed it with Kara as well and along with Claire.
As long as it's compliant with the Long Island.
Yeah, up to a hundred and thirty percent.
Yeah.
And that meets your middle, low to middle, is that what you're looking for then?
It can include that.
Okay.
It'll include the very low, low to moderate, median and medium is the highest.
The highest.
So, by saying nothing, it automatically defaults to that level?
Not to that level, up to that level.
Up to that level, that's what I mean, to that description.
Yeah, it goes from fifty to a hundred and thirty percent of the AMI.
So, what language are we using here?
So, I have it on page two, under affordable housing at the bottom, so I highlighted in gray, I added available to all the town workforce and then that second paragraph, I have that, the determination that, let's see, Kara differs to the board.
Well, that has to change, I think we just, adherence with the whatever, blah, blah, blah.
Instead of saying up to you or...
I actually, I have a quick, basic question about either the first paragraph, because it's saying you have to be employed in the town, I thought that was not allowed by federal law and I mean, this is just what I've read in the newspaper, so I'm not an expert.
I'm sorry, are you saying employed by the town?
Employed, in other words, it's, you have to be employed by, in the town of Southampton, not by the town.
Yes, it's the Southampton Town Workforce.
So, if I can just jump in, when we spoke with Kara, right, so there is chapter 216 under the town law and it contemplates true Long Island workforce Housing Act developments, but this isn't necessarily what we're dealing with, these are affordable apartments, but they are not necessarily chapter 216 projects. So, I mean, we can get clarification on that respect in terms of what needs to be in there, but it's not the same as like lottery projects or those other things and that was something that when, and Prentice, you weren't part of this conversation, but that's the conversation that Prentice had with Kara, just to sort of, you know, we're using workforce, but it's like kind of lowercase work, workforce as opposed to...
So, and what I'm reading about in the paper is a different, it's different.
Yeah, that's like the Long Island Workforce Housing Act and that's a little bit different from just being straight up regulated and covenanted affordable.
But she's going to use, she's going to de facto use those guidelines up to the hundred and thirty percent.
Well, the income guidelines, absolutely.
Well, she should write something and we should review it, I mean, I don't think, I personally don't think it's up to this board.
I spoke to her last week about this and she was going to send me an email, so she probably just forgot, so maybe have her just send an email, just...
Did you?
Yeah, just recapping what we discussed and what it meant.
So, it'll take out this paragraph.
She did on pages seven and eight, that was Kara's...
I'm sorry, paragraph, this is to define the income.
Sort of what I summarized at the beginning of the discussion.
I think the board can just say, with the guidance of the workforce housing act, in conformance with guidance of...
In conformance with, yeah, that's what we would say.
With the workforce housing act eligibility.
Yeah, she, they're not going to give specific income levels because they don't have anything to come with that, so it'll just be in conformance with the eligibility as determined by, yeah.
Can you say that again so that she gets the language?
I'll sit with you and I'll...
I have to come down and...
All right, so I'll change the language.
Good. Perfect. My toes are on the ground.
So, the underlying tone of it all was that the affordable units will be memorialized in perpetuity as part of the covenants, that was one of Kara's primary objectives.
Okay, and that should be included in that?
Yes, yep, and that is something that we are agreeable to, also agreeable to the income eligibility requirements and the vetting process through the town with the acknowledgement that the property owner does have the ability, as the landlord, he'll select his tenants under those criteria.
So, these units will have to secure rental permits in accordance with the town regulations?
Yes.
I'm sorry, they'll have to secure rental permits?
Yeah, I would imagine so.
And as part of that process, the tenants, I know in rental permits, the tenants have to be listed on the permit and will the Housing Office then make sure that those listed tenants qualify, have been vetted or somehow?
Yes.
That whole process, I'm assuming, we're all assuming that process is in place?
They have to certify eligibility and they, you can even make mention.
And they confirm income?
Right, there's a vet, I know there's a vetting process and then you're certified by the town, you submit documentation.
So, the rental, I think the rental permit is something that is...
For any rental.
Yeah, that's for any rentals in the town.
Yes, any rental.
To make sure that the apartment...
And then there's a separate process that would be income eligibility standards that go through Kara and the town housing department.
Right, but those names on the rental permit listed as tenants will have been...
Vetted by...
Vetted and they'll be cross-referenced, I'm hoping.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm hoping the Housing Office, the rental, I don't know, I know code enforcement handles rentals, but hopefully the covenant will bleed into the...
What code enforcement looks at is whether or not the apartment is safe and suitable and complies with the town code, right, so that we have...
Right, but they'll have to take that extra step to make sure those tenants...
Same person.
Listen on their side. No, somebody else must do that and not code enforcement. Who else would do that?
I'm not sure if we list the tenants.
They look at the lease, they look at the amount, the quantity that's, the unit is being rented for and make sure that's in compliance with the income level and the...
The permits will probably go to the Housing Office, okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, this is one of those cases where every new tenant, change of tenancy will need to be reviewed by the town housing authority to ensure that the rent control is in line and the tenant meets the qualifications under the income eligibility standards.
So, Prentice, you want to read that? I'm also reading what Kara wrote and I'm finding some suggestions, potential legal challenges to what we're doing.
If, yeah, if it were specific to the board.
A single employer.
A single employer, yeah.
What are you saying?
Have you, have you read Kara?
I have not read that, but I did speak with Kara and I'm fine with what she is suggesting because she, they are saying that these apartments are going to meet our eligibility standards, but because it's such a small project and there's only a couple apartments, they don't go through an entire lottery process because it's a very expensive undertaking. So, what they do is as long as the people who are going to be renting them are verified and certified by them to be income eligible, whatever level that they're at, it's up to the landlord to pick among those who are in fact eligible.
And ultimately, what ends up being binding is the covenant that we will record and that is reviewed by the housing director, so it will contain language that is appropriate for town's purposes and for all other purposes in terms of, you know, fair housing and all those things, so I mean, I would say that ultimately, the controlling document will be the recorded covenant and that's based on a template that the housing department has and that will be reviewed by Kara, right, and she'll sign off on it prior to recording to let the board know that that condition of the approval has been approved.
So, we have a line?
That help?
Yeah, that totally clarifies it for what, to take this out and substitute the language that Christine is saying.
Okay, I'll adjust that, especially that second paragraph.
Yeah, and then Claudia? Yeah, I mean, I had made myself a note to question this and I, the one sentence that Kara has in here which makes me a little more comfortable is because she raises all the potential lawsuit issues of the way it was originally structured, she writes, "A safer approach and one that many other towns use is to set eligibility based on general workforce residency, not a single employer. This way, the town can meet its affordable housing goals without putting the town in a legally vulnerable position."
I think she's giving you, I think she, this has all been provided with the thought that you were going to be setting limits, based on the fact that you're not comfortable setting the limits, which is understandable, you're just deferring and saying, "No, we're saying up to the one thirty, whatever it is, it is," and that's, you know...
Up to the standard that...
Open to everyone rather than that.
The standard that is set by the housing.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this is a great idea, I was just struggling with us getting in trouble.
The good news is hopefully we're blazing a trail here for other projects to follow. This is an important model, I think it's great that you guys are in support of it, I understand the scrutiny and I'm happy to work through it.
Well, it sets a precedent because people with larger projects are going to look at this and say, "Oh, well, look what you did there."
Especially on the west side of the canal.
That's right, so I think the wording is critically important, that's why we defer to Kara Back and to council's language.
Yep, that's why we're happy to work through it, Olivia.
That was the, one of the biggest open issues since we last reviewed the staff report, I think everything else we worked through regarding parking, unless you had anything in addition?
I just wanted to clarify the parking, the overage had to do with square footage, there was a misrepresentation of language on the plans about the basement, I think we talked about that, I don't know if we ever got clarity on that, the basement in Hampton's Yard building is going to be just finished storage space, the labeling on it seemed to indicate that there was going to be some kind of office use of it, it's just storage.
Storage. So, is a different parking calculation for that?
So, it reduces the parking calculation because we had one issue with the one land bank space.
Yeah.
And that one land bank space would be...
Storage.
Well, the way it is now, if we remove the one landing, because it's within the front yard setback, that if we include that finished office space, you're short five spaces, so if we remove the land bank, that's six, but then the board was, we discussed this at the last meeting, the board is willing to waive the six spaces that are required by the units collectively on both lots, so you're essentially back to even.
Okay, but I also wanted to make that point of clarification, that there was a representation of office space in...
Yeah, I think we might have to consider it.
That should be changed on...
It should be changed on the plans.
Our updated plans are coming in, yeah, we will have updated plans with the properly.
Will there still be a bathroom, do you think?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, all right.
We can get clarification on that.
I think that's...
So, what else do we have to discuss?
That was everything from the staff report that was open and I also have a draft decision attached to the packet you have, it's a separate...
If you can read the language that we just discussed.
Oh, I mean all...
I would feel comfortable hearing that.
Are you otherwise finished?
We want it to be conforming.
Are you otherwise finished?
Well, we just have to go through the...
Because I was going to say, we can step off and work out the language and come back.
Okay, let's do that.
But you can adopt, and then we can adopt it altogether. Great. So, the second set of, is the resolution for the conditional approval? Yeah, okay, so that starts on page two, with the special exception of dwelling uses, with the conditions of the...
Right.
At the top of page two?
Result, mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, these are the conditions for the special exception use, outdoor surgery prohibited, submission of the affordable housing covenants to the satisfaction of the town attorney's office and the recording of the covenants with the county.
And then the, do they have to file any covenants with the housing department?
No, Kara will look at all that language first, she's already provided a draft for Brent and Martha to look at and they've already been working on it.
Okay, so we don't have to include that as one of the required documents?
No, I mean, if you want, I could include the satisfaction of the town attorney's office and the housing director.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the site plan approval subject to the following conditions, we're still on page two, changes to the site plan prior to signature, I point out the fire zone by the fire marshal along with the signs to their satisfaction, the removal of the land bank space and realizing the second space, so there'll be no land bank spaces, the ADA spaces to increase on lot number seventy, to increase it to two spaces without increasing the number of parking spaces altogether and that all of those spaces be nine feet wide, updating of the parking calculations, this is another discussion, the parking space, to note, the parking space is designated for the apartments with signage, one per unit on each respective lot. Lot number seventy two, remove the light pole at the end of the driveway and reorient the light pole at the trash enclosure, note the locations of the two EV chargers that the Brent has presented, they were going to include, note the rooftop solar panels for each of the structures, include the nearest hydrant for lot number eighty, we discussed the four foot height sensing for the outdoor play area for the school, so that'll, that should be shown on the plans, density flow calculations on the plans, compliance with public safety and compliance with the town engineer and for the architectural building plan, same thing with the, same note for the solar panels to be shown, some minor items of North Arrows, the corrected street address for number seventy and then the building elevation is just a little bit more detailed there with materials, colors, finishes and Changes to the landscape plan have to do with the land bank parking and we discussed at the last meeting, including six feet high elevations around both trash enclosures and the fencing in the gate for the school use, for the lighting plans, any LED to view 2700 Kelvin rather than 3000 and reducing all the 12-foot high poles to 10 feet, updating the photometrics and then any lighting spec sheets for the secondary entries that take you to the apartments and reference the town use on the plan. And then there are the general conditions of all HVAC and mechanics to be screened, any signage is subject to Planning Board review and approval, compliance with the town code and dark sky requirements, no dusk to dawn fixtures, all proposed lighting be shielded and project down, the 2700 Kelvin, no additional lighting without Planning Board approval, no internally lit EV charging stations, no public address or sound system, no outdoor storage and the note of the Planning Board encouraging the sustainable and redesign elements into their plans and that they arrange the pre-construction meeting with the engineering division, site inspections and then the items to be submitted for prior to approval are the cross-access easement and the shared access between both of the subject sites inclusive of the driveway, shared parking easement and that could be, I think, the same document, covenant for any change of use of the business that occurs in the future or that has to be treated as a special exception use, so that will be in the covenants. I can take that.
I'm sorry, of...
That's part of the special exception specific standards that because the units, because of the units, if there's any change of use in the future to the business that might affect, you know, how these uses sort of work together, so the code states that if there's any change in the commercial use, that it be treated as a special exception use, so the board can consider it alongside the units.
So, the special exception was specifically for the apartment units?
Yeah.
It's not for the commercial uses?
No, so right now, this, it's specific to the apartments, but in the future, should these commercial uses ever change, the code states that it be treated as a special exception use.
So, it may be a use that is incompatible with residential...
Yeah, just so the board has an eye on compatibility, yeah.
Because I would, I would think that the apartments as a special exception use are compatible with any use that is permitted in the district, right, so I'm not sure why a permitted use, like permitted underlying primary use would then have to be converted into a special exception.
It's office districts only.
Right, so if you, if you meet the permitted uses in the office district, I understand if we were to change it.
If it's in the code, we just repeat it, that's, that's what we do, we just repeat it, that they, that's what the code says.
Yeah, well, I mean...
To double check.
Suppose they decide that that use goes away and they put in something else that's a totally different use, that use would have to comply with the standards, special standards, so I can see that, makes sense.
So, what I'm saying is, I, if, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but if we were to be requesting a special exception use for either any of the commercial uses, 100%, I'm in agreement, I'm just wondering, I haven't, I don't, I don't remember the code language, but if the code language was specific to the special exception uses themselves or if there's...
No, it says change of use, so it's right now, it's an office, right, so you did another office, you'd be fine, but if you came and changed it to a restaurant or something, it would be treated as a special exception, there's just no, that's what the code says and that's why we have that language.
Even if it's a permitted use for the district?
Correct, a restaurant would be a permitted use in OD, right?
So, from just a practical standpoint, how would you, you're just applying the general special exception, not any, because there wouldn't be any specific criteria because it's a permitted use.
Right.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's...
So, it's very confusing, but restaurants probably the best example and you probably would want to put a couple more standards in there, thinking maybe it's an apartment, it might have kids, you might want to do something set where you set up the entrance, you know, there might be something to that, I'm not quite sure, but that's, that's what the code is and we wanted to put you on notice.
The change of use would still trigger site plans, so...
Right, it'll trigger a site plan anyways.
Right.
So, the only difference is that the special exception standards would be put on and there would have to be a hearing and that's, that's the trigger, but we want to put you on notice because that's a part of the code people don't look at.
Right.
Okay, I think that makes sense, but going from one office to another, just changing tenancy.
Would not be a change.
It's got to be a change of use, not a change of tenancy.
A change of use, yes, exactly.
Yep.
Can we be specific like, sometimes the word use means something different when you're doing a tenancy change versus a use use change.
We could look at the language, I mean, it is your covenant and we could look at it and things like that, but that's...
Does it get put in a covenant?
We are suggesting as a covenant, yes, because, because people don't know, it's a notice to people, you and then future owners that, yes, and change in the, the space below would trigger it other than another office, which is a change of tenancy.
So, you know, and I suppose when we draft the covenant, we can draft the language so that it's clear it means like a principle of...
We've done this before.
Like use on a use table use.
We definitely have a sample, so we could, we could tweak language.
Can you send that to me, the sample?
I have to remember which one I'm done this for, but yes, we can do that, no problem.
So, that takes us to, D I will remove since there will be no land bank spaces, E's title, certification, mortgage consent, town attorney approval of legal documents, payment of the engineering fee which has already occurred, the Notre Rice affidavit and the six sets of plans, number seven, items for building permits, stake and snow fence the existing trees along the street that are to remain and then eight is for the maintenance bond of two years for the landscaping, that'll have to occur before the C of O's issue.
Very thorough, Prentice, that's great.
I'll revise, so there's two actions here, but maybe you want to hold off until I revise the report?
Well, let's hold off until council looks at that language that you're going to change and then we'll vote, bring it back and we'll vote on it.
Yeah, maybe. It's going to be a little bit, but I'll bring it back.
Oh, okay.
We have a work session next and then we'll bring you back, if you're, if you're ready for it. So, we're closing out of the afternoon session and going into a work session and that is the Connor Freelander Gateway. So, Carl Benincasa and...
Greg Connor. Got my name checked?
Forgot your first name, great.
It's only been 20 years, maybe a little bit longer.
Greg Connor.
Sorry.
Dennis, please.
Carl Benincasa, 868 Montalk Highway, Watermill, New York.
Greg Connor, 2415 Montalk Highway, Main Street, Pritchambe.
So, you received this a few years ago.
We've seen it in many iterations.
Robbie Fields.
This was the drawn and there was a concerted effort...
This was the drawn and there was a concerted effort to sell it to the town, CPF, which never got out of the gate, really. I mean, we've had numerous meetings, we've never got an offer.
Our side tried.
Yeah. We tried for a good year and a half.
Seventeen months? May of twenty-four.
So did, was that an offer to the town made before you carved off the Bud Hampton property or?
It was never included that property, but everything else.
It never included that, everything else.
Offered to, well, we engaged with the town saying we'd be interested, we're willing seller.
Right, we were willing sellers. The town where it was interested, they said they want, they were considering all the property except for three acres on the highway because they still wanted some development, they wanted some commercial development. So they, I think it's thirteen and a half acres, they wanted three acres to us and they were going to purchase ten acres, some of, some of it for affordable housing. That was seventeen months ago. They've had appraisals.
We've had numerous meetings.
We've had meetings, it took us six weeks to get a silly meeting that took, should have been four seconds on a phone call because I'm readily available, and we're still waiting. From this June meeting, we're still waiting.
So are you saying it's a closed issue?
It's done.
It seems that way, I mean, we have to move on.
Yeah. So you're now proposing?
So this is their preferred plan, which is a seven lot, this is very, this is exactly what was considered in the pre-app report. They submitted the preliminary in twenty-twenty-three, I think, so we have an act of sitting incomplete application. We had a work session in June where we said we update the wetlands line, they did it, so this is their plan. Now, looking at the code, it was changed to say shall have a PRD plan for commercial developments in HB zoning district, and this is HB zoning district. So we do need that exercise of the yield plan and a PRD plan. I'm thinking twenty-five percent open space makes sense in this. There's no, I don't think, didn't see any provisions of a specific, you know, requirements for the open space, so.
In the PRD?
The PRD, so I think it's twenty-five percent. I want to double-check that and I'll tell them that.
We're, we're still talking, some of this land is, is, is commercial and there's a piece of it that's residential.
Correct.
That hasn't changed.
The most southern piece is residential.
Residential, towards, towards.
It's like two acres or something, mostly wetlands, but they can carve a lot out of it, yeah.
So that's for the residential, but the northern part is all HB.
Yeah, I, I was just reminding myself and let David know.
Yeah, thank you.
What we're talking about.
But there's horrible topography here and wetlands on the residential.
So there's two things that in a normal PRD that you would be preserving, which would one be the wetlands, and the second would be this is class, this is prime bank soils, even though the only, if you put on the egg district, I think it's only the southern portion of the property, you can see that.
In the wetlands there.
Yeah, where the wetlands line is, so that's kind of, that's just the overlay district that the town had established.
And where is the lot that's being carved out?
The lot.
I mean, not carved out, the residential lot.
Oh, it's the most southern area.
Right by the wetlands?
I mean, that's where, that's where the zoning is for.
That is where the zoning is.
Does it have sufficient setbacks to put a lot in there?
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. They're proposing a ninety-seven thousand square foot lot in the back that would be the residential lot.
Don't confuse the topo with the wetland setback, that's all topo.
So.
This is the wetlands line, just here.
Okay, and the others are topo lines?
That's all topo lines, yeah.
Is that sort of rectangular box, is that the residential lot?
No.
This one.
I, well, I can't, I can't.
The one arrow's on right now?
Yes, that's the residential.
That's the northern residential.
That's, that's, that's how I was interpreting that, thank you.
And the rest is?
And the wetlands are all the, the blue shades, so there's.
It's marked on the plan.
It's on the plan, this is modest.
But I, but I can't see that for what.
Again, yes, the answer is yes, Gloria, yes.
Yeah, so.
This is the, this, I'm tracing the line with my hands, it comes right over here.
It approximately follows the property line, actually. There's a little bit on the property line and off the top. So the, two, three things that I think is necessary, just going beyond that, they have the yield plan and they have the cluster plan for consideration. Also, the next step within the preliminary is SECR, so we coordinate, and then we do the exercise. I do think that, and you had mentioned in your pre-app report that you'd want a concept about what would happen with this development, and they'd have to, you know, not, not exactly, you know, obviously, this is a.
Conceptual.
Conceptual, something they, they've already done a traffic study, so they've already considered, okay, we're going to have certain types of uses on the property, but that concept plan would also be something that you consider during SECR.
Do we have maps to that, this is, this is preferred? Do we have a cluster map and do we have a PRD? If you haven't done that.
Those are, those will be, those are deliverables for you. You'll have.
It would be nice to look at them, to see.
Yeah, so that's.
In terms of a conversation.
We're going to see, this is going to remain incomplete after this conversation, the work session. So the, the second item on the agenda with the SECR coordination, we would need those plans in order to do a SECR coordination with the other entities.
So there's seven, just basically, give us the basic information, there's seven lots?
There are nine lots now, they want to consolidate into seven. They're going to do a yield plan, which might result in ten lots as of rights, and then they're going to show a PRD, which is a cluster. And what I'm saying to them is if they do avow themselves of a PRD with full density or, you know, seven lots or whatever they want to do, you have the ability to bury those setbacks. If they have an idea of what they want to do, an anchor store or something like that, you have the ability to, to assist in what they want to design, you know, if you have an idea of what they want to.
Do you have any idea of how you're going to develop this or what you want there?
The traffic study.
I mean, that's what the work session is about, same conversation.
The answer to your question is besides the cannabis dispenser, restaurant, who's approached me? Medical offices approached me, banks have approached me, restaurants have approached me.
That's what was considering.
I've had lots of people approach me that don't fit into the HB highway business criteria, supermarkets, that kind of a thing. I could get millions, I can get a ton of supermarkets if y'all.
Really, interesting. As long as it's Trader Joe's.
Yeah.
I've had, everybody, anybody who you can think of since COVID, for, happened during COVID, everybody's, everybody you could think of, from the Amazon, Whole Foods to Trader Joe's to Giuseppe's to all of them, every one of them, coming in two seconds. But it's a part of the code, so I've done them all.
Does Kim Cal have a, an exclusive or non-competitive clause?
They have a shopping center district, so that allows them to do different things than us.
That is a shopping center district, that was before my time, yeah.
It was a movie theater.
That was a movie theater.
Driving movie theater.
Yep.
Now, that wouldn't apply here in HB? Would it apply in a PRD?
Would what apply?
Well, would apply.
What would apply in a PRD?
You mean a shopping?
Anything, what would, what, what, what you, could you develop in a PRD?
Oh, just what HB would permit.
Yeah, HB, yeah.
Okay, same, it's the same formula, okay.
I could do a deli, but I can't do a supermarket, that kind of thing. So I, I've had lots of people, I've had, before the COVID, I had lots of movie theaters, how about that? We're thinking about coming because it was perfect right between the two towns and the lease was coming up in Southampton, it was a whole thing, so. But no, I've had a bunch of people come, Jim Equinox, remember that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I guess that would be a consideration also with Jim.
What about a, a zone change? Or is that a use change at that point? Is that a use change, Claire?
A supermarket thing?
Well, suppose.
Say I wanted a supermarket?
Yes.
Well, first of all, the building, it would be more than that because the town doesn't allow more than fifteen thousand square feet.
Highway business, right.
Right, and, and every supermarket's like, well, can we get sixty thousand square feet?
Correct.
No, click, because, you know, it's not an exercise I want to go through today, which you're going to be talking about a few years.
So you're limited to each street?
I mean, I can see things that are reasonable but a little over the line that you'd come and talk to, but if somebody needs sixty thousand square feet, it's not a conversation. They said, we need twenty thousand square feet, we can maybe, you know, work something out, you know, aggregate-wise or something, but I never had that conversation with a supermarket.
And has anybody talked to you about affordable housing other than the town? Are there any developers interested?
No, no, one developer came, but he wanted to see if he can get over two hundred units, one of those type of things, and I was like, yeah, wrong town, click. I field a lot of phone calls, I really do, because the sign is out front, right?
Right.
So I field calls and, you know, every major real estate developer in the city, by the way, has a house in Sagaponeck or East Hampton or something, so they drive by.
Right, right.
You know, they think we're country bumpkins and we don't know.
Right. The town actually did make an offer on affordable housing component, but the arrangement was contingent on a sort of a global offer and that's where they could never come to terms.
Also, they were, they were buying in subject to from me.
Subject, subject to what?
Subject to, they wanted to increase the density, I guess, eight, eight town homes on an acre, is that something that sounds familiar? And they wanted to increase it to twelve town homes on an acre. So they would do it subject to me getting that approvals. I said, me getting the approvals? You're the town!
Yeah.
You want this? I was, it was, it was really kind of botched.
But they, we, we never got an, an offer.
Never, yeah.
So if you wanted to do affordable housing here, what zone would that?
That would be like a, an overlay, the plant, like an MF forty-four, or if it was affordable, there's an affordable housing overlay.
So the town would create an overlay, an MF?
Well, the applicant would.
Approach the town, the town would say, we'll rezone it for, for that. Okay, I'm just trying to think of uses, you know? That's what the conversation is about. It's so perfect because there's a bus stop there and there's a supermarket and there's a, if you live.
Did you guys miss that time board meeting when this happened?
Well, it's.
This is crazy and it had nothing to do with anything, but it was, it's property, property is perfect for affordable housing.
It is.
It meets every criteria.
This was years ago.
And the neighbors went ballistic.
Oh, that's way longer.
I know, you do. You guys don't remember, the neighbors went ballistic with affordable housing coming in. Callis Pond and they, they got.
Well, I remember the Callis Pond issue.
People and the, and they got Mr. Bregman from East Hampton to, to speak for them and they got people who were against the PDD and it was a whole giant thing. We didn't even bring the PDD, it was the town that wanted the PDD.
Yeah. Strawberry Fields.
Maybe, maybe attitudes have changed now with the need for housing being so desperate at this point?
I don't think so.
Fifteen years ago.
They're going to complain.
Not in my backyard. Especially, especially over here, let's be honest.
Yeah.
People complain.
Anyway, let's, we're going to go through with this and zone changes, more time and money and I'd rather just kind of go with that as a right use.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, it's also a piece that I think requires some creative thinking.
Hundred percent.
To make it, you know, state-of-the-art, it's an entrance way, it, it, it has so much potential to be developed in the best possible way.
I agree wholeheartedly.
And that's why I ask, now, in the PRD, what do you gain in a PRD is more open space?
Yeah, but the dense, I mean, technically, they, they would have the right for whatever that yield plan would show, and then you would have the ability to flex zoning, you know?
In a PRD.
Yeah.
But what about, I mean, as of right now, it's seven lots?
Mm-hmm.
As of right.
Well, we think it's going to be about ten.
About, probably ten.
As of right, ten. You're excluding the wetlands?
Yes.
And the, and the slopes, I believe.
And the slopes. So that leaves you with how many acres to develop?
Well, we don't have, they're going to have to do this exercise, yes.
So you'll let us know that, what your bulk is, you know, to?
It would be, what, ten acres?
Probably, no, how many?
Thirteen acres, right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen and a half acres.
If you carve out that.
Be in the, the road, you know, any road you need or anything like that.
We're guessing, this is like, we'll just get it done and we'll see what it is.
Nine or two, right.
It's not going to be seven, it's not going to be twelve.
Right. So another work session when he has this information?
Yeah, I mean, the work session is great to be able to, because this just leverates the conversation exactly for us. Gets you thinking in the way maybe we're thinking to help you not waste time and effort and money.
Do you guys prefer a cluster plan?
I guess it would be, depend on what it looks like, right?
Depends what it looks like and.
Cluster of office buildings?
You're going to be using the signal, right?
Smaller lots and preserve.
The answer is yes.
Like a residential cluster.
The signal that we're changing for the Bud Hampton thing was, is going to trigger everything else in there, right? So that's a little work for everybody.
Well, that's a great way to get at it.
And this is, this is going to be updated, obviously, there's a right of way because of the Bud.
I know.
So whatever's built to do cross-access to that signal.
When are they going to start that?
To allow people to start.
When will they start that signal work? Do you know?
The, when will they start with the application with the DOT? That's.
Underway. I'm happy to chat about that if you like.
That's actually on the agenda today.
I, I call Walter, and I'm going to call him when I'm done here today, I call him once a week, Walter Dunn, and she tells me where they're at, and I'm thinking the application, the, the final application for the lights going in next week. They were just getting some topography stuff and some scaries and pavement, whatever.
Right.
Not out of my purview, I don't, you know?
Yeah.
You talk circles around me, but it should be going in and for what we're talking about, and that'll access the property for the regular subdivision, the whole subdivision.
And there's no other entrance here, right?
No, originally, if you look, no, that's not true, the furthest west, the Carnival property?
It was going to be like a.
A right-in and right-out from over there as well.
You're talking about two, we're talking about Bud Hampton now.
No.
No, we're talking about the development.
The light and a right-in, right-out from the furthest west portion of.
Does it have a name, this development? Have you named it?
Connor Gateway.
Connor Gateway.
Connor, Connor Friedlander Gateway.
Yes.
Connor?
Friedlander.
Friedlander.
Okay, good.
Any other questions by anybody?
So when we get the updated plans, we'll come back to schedule a work session.
Yeah, let's see, see what a cluster looks like, what a PRD looks like, how much land you have left when you exclude.
Look at PRD, clusters, I got that.
Cluster is a PRD.
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha.
And how much, and the yield, and taking out the wetlands, taking out the slopes, to see what you've got to develop, what's left, yeah. Is there anything in the master plan on this, Claire? There is. Have you? What does it say? What does it say?
Create a gateway to the Bridgehampton.
Gateway to Bridgehampton. Whatever that looks like. They had all the right things in mind, not just highway business, right? It was a whole thing. It's done in nineteen ninety-nine?
Yeah.
Oh, the, the master plan's old, yes, way old.[1592.56] Oh, that, the master plan's old, yes, way old.
What they wanted there was, would've been great for me.
It's a different world.
It would've been retail and this and that.
Totally different. No, I'm just thinking, you know, the, the Bridgehampton community probably would.
Oh, they put the Kai Posh on there.
Love to weigh in, you know, in terms of.
No, they're okay, no, they'd be fine. We don't have to talk about, we don't have to talk to them.
It's worth your while.
We, we had a wonderful relationship with them, to be quite honest with you, when we were doing this PDD. And they were, we were doing, we had a wonderful main street, and we had affordable housing on top, like, you know, like, right? It was a whole thing, right?
Yeah.
And then, um, one lady in particular, neighbor, was like, yeah, not in my backyard, literally.
Well, you'll always have somebody like that.
Yeah, but she was a very squeaky wheel. And she got, forget the neighbors of the six houses. Whatever. They, she got, everybody who passes by there into East Hampton weighed in. It was, it was a whole thing. Like I said, the town couldn't put their own PDD through the thing that they proposed, because it was too much.
Problems with democracy. Too much democracy.
Well, we'll fix that. We'll fix that.
Some affordable housing over stores?
Trump for supervisor.
Again, you know, that, it's not in the code, how's that? So, you'd have to say something to me and push it through for me.
But you have retail there, right? HB has retail.
It's some retail.
Pretty limited.
Limited to, due to, uh.
Furniture stores?
Furniture stores, liquor stores.
I could put, I could put, um.
Think of, uh, think of the Highwood County Road thirty-nine.
Yeah, think of County Road thirty-nine.
Those retail uses.
Hardware stores.
Thanks.
Banks, office buildings, medical offices.
Everything from lobster in the year, right? What you kind of see there.
We don't have a bank, we don't have a bank now.
Well, it was a problem for many, many years, because Bridgehampton had their home rule.
Yeah.
And, um, a very, very prominent bank, that I'm sure all of us bank with, or one of us, at least in the family does, has wants to move in, and they're looking into that home rule right now, because now the dime took it over, is the home rule still, still in effect?
But it's a small piece, I mean, it's a whole building.
Yeah, but I, I, again, I don't know the banking rules, but that was always the reason why there's no bank in Bridgehampton.
Well, it was a major bank, now it's just a tiny little outpost.
I, I was, I'm under the understanding, again, it's third, third hand, that, that dime somehow was able to keep that home rule with the Bridgehampton National Bank.
Even if they reduced in size.
Yeah, I, I, no, again, it's not my thing, but this bank I'm talking about, probably the most powerful bank in our country, they're looking into it, so they'll, they'll have an answer.
There's no other bank in Bridgehampton?
No, think about it.
Well, there's a small one, M and T, is it, in the shopping center?
Yeah, there was Ridgefield something.
It was something else, and then it changed. No, there is no bank.
I'm thinking about it.
And, and there was B and B, it was where Starbucks was, because that's where the safe is.
Many in Southampton, many in SAG, right?
Yeah, but not in Bridge.
Oh, I could rent the banks, please.
Yeah?
So that's, and that's permissible in HB.
In Bridgehampton.
Thank you.
Before you go, the subject of traffic signals came up, which reminded me that there is newer technology at traffic signals now, rather than the sensor in the ground tripping off, tripping the signals. Um, my understanding is there is what I'll call car counting technology, that literally at the signal counts the cars in the queue, rather than simply start to activate to go to red when a car pulls up and goes over the sensor. I think it would be great if Walter, whoever, you know, were to have that conversation with the DOT about perhaps looking something other than the standard technology that's on all our roads right now, and go to something more advanced like that.
May they jump in?
Yes.
The answer is yes, it's already been happening.
It is.
They might acquire that, to be, it might not even be a conversation, it's probably gonna be a requirement.
Great.
Again, Walter was on my behalf, talking to them, because it was more money, that kind of signal, because I have to replace the signal. Um, but he's telling me that it's pretty much gonna be a requirement, that all the new signals going in, they're gonna want that.
Okay, because we are, we're asking the state to do it on their dime at all the existing signals, so, you know? I don't know if we'll have any success with that, but we're gonna try.
One less dime to spend on my strike, but that's what they're trying, that's what they, I've been told they're looking to do.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great.
Well, this was very helpful.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Everybody, I'll see you in a few weeks.
Well, we have Bud Hampton, understand?
Yeah, Bud Hampton on.
There's no action on Bud Hampton today, I was just showing the.
But you wanna go back into the regular session?
Yes, but, yeah, so I wanna close out the work session and go back into the regular session, and we'll jump to number six, Bud Hampton. Did you bring any elevations for me? I know, but we took rid of that fence, remember? We had the whole conversation about getting rid of the fence and putting. You don't remember this? You do remember it?
I mean, I'm, I, we don't have final plans yet, everybody, I mean, we're still.
This is, this is what we had before, there's new ones.
They just showed the trellis on the side. They were just doing this to show that they added the trellis on the side.
That's nice, okay.
Um, that's really what they just, I'm, I'm gonna.
Just as long as they're, Carl's clear about what I, what we said about no fencing.
Beforehand, the fence is a no-go.
Rather lush landscape.
We have the conditional approval outline, the changes that this board required.
Right.
Um, and we're still working on that, when I get final plans, I'll present them to the board. I just wanted, I got this in, and I wanted to show the board, uh, because I wasn't at the meeting when you guys had the discussion about.
Anthony, do you have the, uh, the site plan that shows where the, um, state pushed the road and parking back?
I don't know that I scanned it, to be quite honest.
Is it scanned in? No. Because you showed it to us.
I did.
Which, which one?
Hold on.
May I ask?
This.
Yep, this is it, I think.
There it is, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, everything's largely the same, but they, there was parking over here that was pushed back. Um, so you got actually more green area in the front here.
Great.
So this is the new plan.
And the height of the bushes?
Anthony, explain what, what happened.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, we, we did a site plan approval, um, and with conditions subsequent to that, they've been working with the DOT, um, which dictates a lot of what's going to happen. Um, and the DOT had some minor changes, where they had some changes to the site plan, notably, there was parking back here.
We can't see your arrow.
Oh, oh.
Where is he?
This is what I have. It, it, parking in the front here where it says.
The front west corner.
Yep, down here, and they shifted that back, um, and they shifted the, uh, cross-access, uh, a little further back.
Yeah, it's back. I think that's good.
No, that's good, actually. Um, it will keep hitting from, from the road, and gives us opportunity to work on this other properties. Um, so, yeah, they made these, but it gives us more green space in the front, actually.
It creates really good circulation, so you come in.
Yeah, it's, it's good, actually.
Make a right in.
Right in, right out.
No, right in and then out by the light.
Yeah, out by the light, there's no out. Yeah, you can see it here, the turn-in lane, the de-acceleration lane.
The light has ingress and egress.
Yes.
There's two, you can go in the light, too.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
From the commons and coming from the east.
And, and we have space in there to turn around, right?
Yes.
Somebody comes in from the signal, the big signal, and they come in, and they do their shopping, then they have enough space to turn around and go back out.
Yeah.
We got some more landscape aisles in here, actually, that are good, um, even over here, because of the curb cut going in here, so we've got some additional landscaping on the site, look pretty good. Uh, but when I get final plan, I'll bring it to the planning board to show you the, the final version. But I did just want to make sure that, you know, because I wasn't there, that this addressed, I think, the planning board wanted some trellis on the side or something to sort of dress up that side. I think overall, the building, uh, looks pretty good.
Okay.
The building looks nice.
Yeah. And that is not indicative of the landscape plan or anything?
No.
No, no, the landscape plan was done by Arius, and it's. It's like, yeah.
The fence is not part of the final.
I, I sort of think, you need some goats gambling behind that fence.
A corral.
That's what it kind of looks like.
Yeah. Petting zoo kind of thing?
I have a vivid imagination.
I need a place for my little peace statue. I just wanted to show the board, and I'll come back. It's there now.
Oh, I saw, yes. So what, uh, so Anthony, what more do we need to do for six? That's it?
I'll make sure, when we get final plans of the landscape, and I'll, I'll bring it to the board to show you.
Please, yeah.
You've asked.
Is there a LIPA? Is there a LIPA pole on that property? I thought I saw a LIPA pole.
There's a LIPA pole near the bus stop, that, is that what you're saying, right there?
There's a pole, yeah.
Yeah, near the bus stop, um.
Is that the dark?
Because they're no longer permitted.
No dusted dawn fix.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what, dusted dawn, light pole?
No, the LIPA, the LIPA poles were huge spotlights, and we, they're not permitted anymore. But they try to sell them to the various retail establishments.
Oh, really?
Uh-huh.
They don't know about the dark sky rule here?
No, they don't.
No.
None of my, none of my neighbors do either.
My favorite's landscape lighting, right? Light up the houses and the trees like.
Yes, I know, that's, that's not permitted in the, in a lighting code, yeah.
Post-CFO.
Oh, post-CFO.
That's always permitted.
No, no, what I'm saying is, inspectors don't allow it, they check for it, for sure.
Yeah.
It's the homeowners come in, post-CFO.
Right.
And then, they needed, then, then it needs a, a waiver to complain, or.
Yes.
A, a, a code enforcement drive at night, that's not happening, right?
No.
So.
Good point.
Roll at night, code, they'll roll at night.
But hopefully, at least they shut them off, they don't leave them on all night.
It's timers, right, usually the, but you can go up and down Ocean Road to Bridgehampton.
Really?
See somebody's house at eleven o'clock, and, they're nice houses.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, as always. We're just waiting for Claire on her next two, so I'll just, we're.
Do you, do you want, yeah, we'll skip to, to Peter Duna?
Yeah, so, just the planning board knows, we're gonna push this off for, doing another extension for two weeks. I'm working out the parking there, uh, trying to get some changes, and I did come across some additional information that'll be pertinent to the board, i.e., twenty sixteen, the site plan approval for that did include one bocce ball court on that property.
Oh, no, oh, no.
Oh, no. Um, so, let me, let me continue my research to make sure I properly incorporate things, I gotta be fair here, you know? There's a lot of files for that site, because it goes back, way back. Um, so I had all these files, but I didn't realize that in twenty sixteen, when they made some changes, that it was back there. So let me, you know, so we're just doing an extension.
So you want a two-week extension?
Yeah, ten, nine, twenty-five.
Motion by Gloria and second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, seven, six in favor?
Can you research that, too, if you could try and find the conditions?
Yeah.
Attached to the hours of operation, days of the week, that sort of stuff, too.
That's exactly what I have to do. All right.
Your next one.
Okay, Claire, you wanna do?
Yeah, we can look at this real quick.
This is.
I anticipate it to be here, this is.
Once seven fifteen?
He had approved this.
County Road thirty-nine.
Yeah, we approved this in August. Uh, one of the conditions of approval, um, was for a cross-access easement to the west, so that's like an existing curb that can be established, but that's fine. This is that car repair, car sales place.
Little place?
Mm-hmm, you had, had a couple of conditions.
Next to Southampton Golf to the east and north.
And to the west is RLW, which has a connection to Tuckahoe Road.
That's the building there.
Georgopolis.
Okay.
This is where, right here is where you're getting to the, um, driving range, Will Hanson's site, I believe.
Yeah.
What, it's on the other side of the street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't confuse me.
Yeah.
Here is.
So, the applicant has submitted a re. So, two conditions related to cross-access. Uh, two conditions related to cross-access, one, uh, to connect to RLW, which is, they're doing, they understand that, it's, it's beneficial to them.
Mm-hmm.
The second one was a future cross-access to the east, to the golf course, and you had stated that that makes sense, just for future planning. Um, the applicant is asking that doesn't not be there, I, I was expecting him today, but he's not around, and I just called this office. So we could table this, or you could consider this, the existing golf course does have access, um, to that road. If you can zoom in a little bit more, Anthony, more, I'm sorry, no? Nope.
Oh, where?
To where, back to the site that we're looking at. You can see that, there, there is a road that they have, if you can zoom in closer.
To this property?
Yeah.
To the golf course.
You see, the golf course actually has, owns a portion, they own a little sliver.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
And they can get to Tuckahoe Road. So, they're, they're saying that, that cross-access is not necessary, because Southampton has the ability to go, the golf course has the ability to go to Tuckahoe Road now.
They just haven't opened it.
They just haven't opened, it's very informal, it's like a golf cart type of.
But not for vehicles.
But not for vehicles.
Is the issue here that the golf course is giving them a hard time about cross-access?
Because it's a future, it's only subject to themselves being, have to connect. The issue is they didn't, they think the golf course already has that, and they shouldn't be coming through their property, because they already have access onto Tuckahoe Road. I'm gonna have him come and speak to you about this, to, to argue.
What, what else could we link? Is that, that's the last piece, right?
Yeah.
That would be the last piece for that section, if you were to draw, you know, so.
So, I think the question, that little dirt path, or whatever it is, you know, what's the width, you know, what exactly is that?
Yeah, what is that?
Can they put it, yeah.
I don't know, do you?
If it's six feet wide, that doesn't work, if it's twelve feet wide.
It seems to be a piece of property, Anthony, they own it, the Southampton Golf Course, you just checked out?
And the parked cars there are part of the car deal, the car business? So the, the golf course owns a little piece in behind the parked cars.
Oh, do they?
Is that what you're saying? See all those parked cars?
Where?
Right there.
That is RLW, that's the other parcel, the parcel to the west of the.
We're talking about that little, smaller parcel to the east.
Just the, 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 um.
So the golf people own behind RLW.
The golf course owns that, so we can't require the golf course, can we, to create a, a road there?
No, no, but if they wanted to, or they were developing their property, they could come to you to ask for that to be opened. And that's, that's the applicant's point, I don't want to advocate, this is for him to advocate himself, so I'm going to have him, if he wants to speak, come at the next available meeting, and we'll just table it.
Now that you've loaded up, we can see it.
Yeah. Back up a little bit.
An eagle, you know, view, eagle eye view.
Oh, yeah, there it is, yeah.
You get a little bit of a better view.
Yeah, exactly, so we'll just table it.
Looks like a walking path, even, you know, just a tiny little.
It looks like a golf cart path, yeah.
The property line looks plenty wide enough, it were, if it were to be improved.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, it looks like it's fifty feet, actually.
Yes.
Do it, so.
So it's a nice one, we can get cross-access and then complete a section, yeah?
Yeah, that's what you were aiming for, but the applicant has asked through Sean Leonard.
We could ask him to come and explain.
I think so. You can advocate for himself. So we'll table that.
Okay.
The next one is number four, Hampton Business District, this is to release, uh, the maintenance bond for, um, phase six, which is the one behind Amazon.
Oh, behind Amazon, oh.
The last building, the last.
Anthony, have that, that's totally built out now.
It's totally built out.
Yeah.
Let me move it.
And functioning?
And functioning. So, go ahead, see.
Sorry, I had a question after this.
Sorry, John. A motion to release the bond by Dennis, second by.
Second.
Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
General question about that particular site, because I know the county is leasing and developing additional airlines? Airline facilities at Gabreski? Does the town get involved with that in any way?
I don't know, that's.
Their hangar facilities, I was at their most recent Gabreski airport meeting.
They have a lot of building going on behind the buildings.
Couple of air, uh, hangars built, and I kind of wondered that myself.
Like behind this site, right? Yeah, I did notice that, you can see it on the aerial, right?
Where, Claire?
If you look at the aerial, north, um, a little bit north, Anthony, yeah, that, see that? That's all new.
We had some kind of.
Oh.
Yeah, there's a lot of building going on, and a lot more planes are coming, are coming in and out, so you see, it seems the county is expanding the operations at the site substantially.
Okay.[1501.98] Okay.
And again, you know, I, I live just south of this, and I understand there's an airport there, but I mean, now, you know, sometimes, like every five minutes, there's a plane taking out.
Really?
And sometimes 11 o'clock at night, you still hear planes going off, so it just seems.
They're still private planes, yeah? No commercial.
All private planes.
Not commercial.
No.
Because I remember.
But their size is commercial planes, but just private planes.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, God.
So do you want me to ask Janice?
I'd be curious to know what, what, you know.
Yeah, of course.
They're doing, and whether we have any input into it.
I still don't trust that Amazon.
They have no requirement.
It's been pretty good.
That county, county managed, county?
Yeah.
Councilman Iacilli is now the co-chair of the Airport Advisory Committee.
Oh, is he?
Yes.
Okay.
Might have a source of information for you.
Interference with interstate commerce or something like that.
When we approved the Amazon, we very clearly stated in there, no commercial.
Yeah.
Use of the airport.
Use of the airport.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna drop by the wayside soon. They're gonna, they're gonna claim interfering with interstate commerce and, I don't see analogy.
I know the county's doing this, and I said, maybe it's on their property, the town doesn't have any involvement, but I'm just.
Right.
At least they, they should let us know, you know, the way we let the other municipalities know within 500 feet.
Three o'clock in the morning with the transport planes to come in.
Well, George will tell us.
Well, I'm telling you now, because I have, I have noticed a real uptick in.
Yeah.
In flights.
I mean, who knew?
Over the last year, 18 months.
The airport manager did have a very good number of charts and graphs talking about flights and incoming, and, you know, the growth in the airport. Might be able to get a copy of that presentation to share with the.
That would be great.
The town does have a seat on that advisory committee, so.
CAC is very active in that area, the West Hampton.
All right, they were, they were, one of their representatives is on the advisory committee also.
Oh, okay, from the CAC?
Emily Sands, I think it is, no, she may have spoken, I'm not sure if she's actually on the advisory board or not.
Yeah, let's see.
Legislator Welker, because it's County Airport, I think, I think she's the chair, I believe.
Oh, is she? Okay.
So there's no runway, right? George, it's just hangers.
Oh.
Well, they have the runway, they use the run, the main run.
They use the regular runway.
Regular runway.
Yeah.
So at one point, when I first, yeah, long ago, the only place they have planes parked was further south, Anthony, if you move the, move it to the left, yeah. You know, down here is where planes would be parked on the left, nowadays, planes actually parked up where they're, where they're built.
Where they have the hangers.
Oh, wow.
Is that long, dark structure, new hangar, is that what that is?
A big, yeah, that dark structure, right?
Wow, it's big.
It is big.
Have to look.
Yeah, that's just, yeah.
Can you see it from the road?
So that's county-owned.
If you drive in that little road, you can definitely see it.
You have to drive in a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, you can definitely see it.
County-owned and managed, correct?
Just look for the tinfoil statue and make a left.
Okay.
Do you have an, a walk-on, too?
Yeah, sure.
Did you do Connor Friedlander?
It's going to be off the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. 192 West Montalk Highway.
192 West Montalk Highway.
It is to set a maintenance bond, that's the, the new 7-Eleven in Hampton Bay.
That's a gas station, so, they finally started.
We got the new sign, didn't you?
They have the sign, yes.
They have the nice sign, did they do the nice sign?
It's all their cross-accesses.
The love stone sign, yeah.
It's all their cross-accesses.
So, that is, so, okay, so, not quite, this is for the maintenance bond, but we can talk about the cross-access. So the cross-access was to be built over the portion of, zoom out just a little, Anthony, just a little bit, a little bit more, sorry. You can see it comes around, can you see that the property for Stop &amp; Shop comes around to the east side, too?
Yes, there's a tinfoil.
So you had said you have to build your property and, over that little leg.
Yeah.
To meet Kimco's property, and they have yet to do that, they're going to come back and ask for performance bonds, they need more time to build it.
Why do they need more time, securing?
Because, I guess there's slopes there, and they don't have the official easement yet from Stop &amp; Shop.
Wow.
Stop &amp; Shop was to do it, that form is being, they won't get a CO until they have the easement, and then after the easement, they can build it, so they don't have the easement in hand yet, from Stop &amp; Shop.
So their CFOs is, will be.
Still not pending, until the easement's in place, there will be no CO issued until a performance, if it's built, or a performance bond.
Once they have the easement, can't they just build it?
Yeah, but it's going to take them a little while, they need to engineer it, I guess there's a little bit of a slope.
They're looking to open it for this build.
Yeah, but that can all be done now.
No, I mean, it's up to you guys, they're going to ask, they're going to ask for it because it's going to, they want, I mean, literally, Lay's is in the parking lot, they want to open so badly, but they won't open until either your performance bond or they build it.
Oh, so where's the grade, is there a grade change, is that the issue?
Yes, that's what he said.
Well, there've been several.
This is what I heard.
Several cross-accesses that we've had, where there've been grade changes, and they managed to.
They've had months to do this.
Structure them.
They've had months to do the engineering and everything else.
Yeah.
It's up to you, if you don't want to do a performance bond, they're going to come and advocate for a performance bond, not today, today would be just to set the maintenance bond, but it's up to you.
Maybe indicate to them that we're reluctant, we want, that we're looking for cross-access now.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I can definitely do that.
So we're.
Do you want to hold on this, then?
Sure.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I think you want to come in and talk to us about it.
Or I could say, you're not inclined to do the performance bonds, do the maintenance bond, that will get, if they really want to do this, they'll just build it.
Yes, yes, that's good.
So let's set, set the maintenance bonds.
Okay, and then you can use that.
Yeah, I can use that as like, oh, if you really want to open.
Okay, so you have.
By the way.
They'll, they'll build it pretty quick.
How much is the maintenance bond?
The hard way.
The amount for the landscaping was $32,000, the maintenance bond would be $10,600.
10,600.
Repeat the address again.
Sure, 192 West Montalk.
Thank you.
192, okay, motion to set this maintenance bond at 10,600?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Prenta, do you want to come back and, do you want to come back and clean up 70 plus 80?
Yes.
70 and 80.
I'm sorry?
I said 70 plus 80.
I printed copies, if anyone wants to follow along, or I could just resume into the record.
Great, thanks.
If you guys want to come up here, so it's the, it's just the, I just pointed the second page, all three proposed department units are designated as workforce or affordable housing and shall be available to tenants certified by the Director of Housing as being up to 130% of the area, of area, you mean, income or AMI. Therefore, response from the Director of Housing has been secured and is included in the report as recommended by the Director, and to ensure compliance with the Federal Fair Housing Act, a covenant will be required to guarantee compliance with the Town Code Chapter 216, in perpetuity mandating year-round residency and adherence to applicable standards and ratio designations regarding income levels as listed in the chapter.
And 130% is going to be a part of that covenant.
Yeah, okay.
You want that added, Christine?
Yeah, I'm like correcting myself, this is not prenta.
All right, where do you want it? Where do you want it?
Up to, just add at the end, up to 130% of.
Regarding income levels.
As listed in 216.
Up to.
130% of AMI.
130%?
Yeah.
Of AMI.
Like the, in the previous paragraph.
Like the previous paragraph, yeah, 130% of AMI.